Tube City Online Radio, McKeesport.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the council meeting. It's Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the life of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, for which this stands, on the nation, our God, and the visible, whatever he is.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Rick Kish Stanisak and former Mayor Lou Waschewitz. Thank you.
Mr. Berry?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Mr. De La Penno?
Present.
Mr. Evans?
Present.
Ms. Lee?
Present.
Ms. Nesbit?
Here.
Mr. Souls?
Present.
Need a motion to approve the amendments from the regular meeting of January 6th, 2021?
Sir, the-
Mr. Soul, second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. De La Penno?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Communications, Annette?
We received both the police and the fire reports for the month of March 2021.
Thank you, Annette. Next, we're gonna do- Next, we're gonna ask for the citizens in the audience. We're all on the phone.
And that needs to read her.
Okay.
McKeesport City Council has received written comments, which we entered into the official record of this meeting and have been provided to each council member and the mayor. We received written comments from the following individuals: Janina Riley regarding police accountability and the events of December 20, 2020; V. Fon Walker Montgomery regarding police accountability and the events of December 20, 2020; Olivia Bennett regarding police accountability and the events of December 20, 2020; Amber Webb regarding police accountability and the events of December 20, 2020; Elena Eagle regarding police accountability and the events of December 20, 2020. Now, we will take comments from the following individuals who have requested to speak to council over the phone. Kynna James, the Alliance for Police Accountability, phone number 412-923-8386.
Your, uh, your three minutes is starting.
Okay, good. Hi, um, the name is Kynna.
Put the microphone.
Put the microphone.
I'm, I'm speaking in regards to the incident that happened with Kobe Francis. Uh, we're not being sad. We understand how mysterious the situation was. But how McKeesport Police treated, um, the McKeesport residents was completely and utterly uncalled for. You know, we're inside in the homes, uh, we were going hungry, and it was freezing cold in the middle of the pandemic. Outside, half clothed, and, uh, I'm sure me and myself and others on this call. I'd like to know what we're gonna do, justice or the community's rights, um, as people. What are we gonna do to hold the McKeesport Police accountable for their actions? You know, and they can't say that they were doing it in search of him because every single person that they, uh, mistreated was not involved with this, I mean. So, yeah, we just wanna make sure, you know, like, that we do the due diligence for the citizens of McKeesport. Because how they were treated was not okay at all. You know, like, we, we're all citizens of Allagany County. We all have rights. And, you know, uh, we got people, police officers just going into people's homes. Like, we didn't just watch what happened to Breonna Taylor. Where, like, eight to ten people don't die a year by accident from getting, their homes ran into by a police officer. We gotta do better, you know, and we need justice for these people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Can you please state your name and your address?
Uh, I'm the Coalition Organizer for the Alliance for Police Accountability, and we represent the entire Allagany County, but our office is 841 California Avenue 15212. And my name is Kynna James.
Kynna James? Okay, thank you, Mr. James.
Next.
Hello, Bonnie Fan?
Is that Bonnie again?
Yeah. Do we wanna do a mark? Did it sound bad on that other phone?
That other one sounds bad. But maybe, we think maybe-
Why's it, why's it?
979. 89.
893.
5970.
Is your system okay?
I think she's on hold. Hello?
Bonnie, is that you? Yes, please. Okay, one minute.
Next is Bonnie Fan.
Okay, go ahead. Bonnie?
Yes.
All right.
Bonnie?
Yes, go ahead. You, you're, your, your time's starting.
Okay. Um, my name is Bonnie Fan. I'm a researcher at Carnegie Mellon University studying public meeting accessibility during COVID-19, and will be featuring the case of McKeesport in my work. Barricading the public from a public meeting was a violation of sunshine ads. And using COVID-19 as an excuse when the entire year of 2020 was held in person until calls for accountability reached the council is precisely why preventing the public from giving comment is illegal. What's more, it shines an even brighter light on the illegal searches and seizures conducted on black families in McKeesport who were suddenly caught in a martial law zone of 10 police departments. The fact that the police, the fact that the public was redirected to make individual complaints when these were department-wide violations makes the idea of a department holding themselves accountable absurd. Now that McKeesport has been spotlighted, this is the time for council to take long-term measures toward healing trust and building communities by banning the area police and putting that budget towards youth programming to end this cycle of violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fan.
Thank you.
Did that sound better? Did that sound better?
Hello?
Hello, Courtney?
Yes.
Tom, Tom here. Uh, the president of council will give you instructions on what to do.
Okay.
Hello, Courtney. Can you please state your name and your address for the record? And then proceed. You have three minutes.
Courtney Hopkins, 1806 Fremont Street, McKeesport, PA 15132.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can proceed.
Okay, um, I was, um, I had some couple issues, um, about, um, the incident that happened with Kobe the day that, um, the officer got shot. Um, the issue was that, you know, you could see it all on Facebook. And so, at that night, around 8 o'clock, I had told my boyfriend, who was on his way to work, to just be careful because, you know, they're pulling people over. Still not thinking that it would even come to our home because there was no reason. Um, the way, um, they came to, um, my home, they, and harassed him and then came to my home with guns drawn was just unnecessary when all they had to do was knock on my door, and I would've let them in with no problem. Um, I think that this house was profiled because my sons, who have lived here, haven't even lived here for, like, the past 10 years. They automatically profiled, um, my home because my sons, they want, uh, hang with Kobe. But Kobe has never been to my house. So, there was just no reason why for them to come to my house and gun. Um, it was very dramatic because they even came, I let them in my home, they even still had the guns pointed to me when I said there wasn't a problem to check it. So, I have a problem with that, um, because I feel it's okay to canvass, uh, canvas the neighborhood, but you need to do it correctly and safely because the gun could've went off, any sound could've happened, and somebody could've got hurt. But I'm just hoping in the future, you know, if anything like this happened again, which I hope don't, there's better process and procedures and respect to the community. And to make it even worse, two doors down is where a lot of the activity that they needed to investigate was there, and he was sitting down in Crawford while you're apparently harassing people that don't even have anything to do with it. So, I just think better, um, skills, uh, you could've put my son's social security numbers in the, in the, uh, in the, um, system and seen that they were in jail, so there was no reason for you to become guns drawn here or at my boyfriend on the way to work. Um, I just think it was really a bad situation. Um, and I couldn't even go to sleep because it was like a gun is drawn on me. Um, so that was my one issue, and then I just, and the other issue was I had with-
Four seconds.
-profiling our young black men, and, and without even investigating the situation. And I think that needs to be changed, too. Um, and my third was before this all happened, I just had some problems with the city works issues on my street. So, I don't know if that, can I talk about that or no?
You're out of time now, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine.
You can call the mayor's office, though, and speak to Jennifer.
I didn't do that plenty of times, but thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, if I made comment, she did call my office, and we made sure her street got paved.
Okay, thank you. Is that complete, your calls? Mayor's report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do wanna start off by, uh, acknowledging the very unfortunate loss of our former mayor, Lou Waschewitz. Anyone, uh, he was without question a dedicated public servant, who really did his very best and put forth all the efforts he could, um, during one of the most difficult times in our city's history, uh, when those mills went down in 82. He was the leader of our community and continued, um, to work tirelessly, uh, to make sure that McKeesport, uh, was on its best, stable ground as it possibly could be. You know, people don't realize the time and energy it takes, um, to be in one of these positions, and to know that he did it, uh, for 15 years, um, is extremely, um, incredible. And, you know, without question, um, he will without question be missed. Um, and our city will be forever indebted to him for his service, uh, to our community. So, we will without question, uh, make sure you keep the family. Uh, they have, uh, my deepest sympathy. Uh, please keep them in your prayers as they go through the grieving process. Just a brief comment, I'm not gonna go into too much. The last speaker in regards to that, um, was the first person that actually said something, um, from personal experience. You know, there's a lot of very, uh, inaccurate allegations, uh, that are going on, uh, in regards to this. I'm not going to get in all of those. Uh, maybe at some point, if there's litigation or something, uh, we'll get to the bottom of it. Uh, what I will tell you is, um, here in the city of McKeesport, uh, there's a reason, uh, you don't see, uh, many of the issues that you see in the world around us. We take pride, uh, in this town. Our officers reside in our community. Their kids go to school in the community. Many of our officers coach or have other types of, uh, relationships with our youth throughout the community, uh, from our police chief all the way down to, uh, officers, whether it's Little Tigers, or wrestling, or baseball, um, whether it's working the Boys and Girls Club, whatever the case may be. You know, there's a community aspect, um, that, that's embedded in our officers. I will tell you, um, that the feedback, um, that I received that night from our officers, um, was incredible. Through that difficult time, um, I talked to, uh, my brass that were out there, um, the supervisors, and, um, in just about every case, they, they were blown away with how cooperative, um, the community was. I'm not saying that there may be, um, an instance out there, um, that may have made someone feel uncomfortable for whatever reason. And, uh, I can't speak for all the officers that were there, um, but all of the crews that were out with our officers, um, as I said, their words were, the cooperation was unbelievable. So, uh, we will continue, um, to work on things in our police department. We work each and every day to continue to build upon our community and police relations, uh, which we have a tremendous relationship, um, compared to, uh, many of the places, uh, that you may see in the world around us. Um, I had a conversation, uh, with the president of our NAACP chapter in McKeesport, uh, just as, as, uh, as late as today. And, uh, to their knowledge, uh, no one has filed a complaint, um, in writing. Um, no one has called, uh, Lou Ethel, who sits on this council as well, um, and vice chair, I believe is her role still with it, McKeesport Chapter. They have access to me directly, uh, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we will continue to, um, work with our local chapter. We're very fortunate. Uh, many communities don't have their own branch of the NAACP. Uh, we will continue to work with them in every capacity, uh, that we can come across to make sure that we, uh, build upon relationships. We address any of, of, uh, racial concerns that are in our community and other concerns as well. We take a lot of pride in this police department. As I said, uh, that night was, um, just a horrific night, uh, for all parties involved. Um, and, and we're very, very fortunate, uh, and blessed, um, you know, that, uh, no one was killed that night. Uh, the officer, um, we, we were able to make sure that we, uh, that Kobe Francis was brought in, uh, without harm as well. Uh, and I think those were the goals from the very beginning. And, uh, as I said, it's without question, is, is an extremely unfortunate incident. It's not an incident that, that I for one, uh, would hide by, hide behind, or, or hide from, I should say. But, uh, I was out there as well that evening, uh, all night, uh, and several evenings after. And, um, uh, it's something that I truly hope that we never have to endure in this community ever again. Moving on to some other things, um, I do just wanna touch on, um, and I'm gonna do so quickly. I don't wanna sound like I'm flying through it, but I don't wanna bore everyone either. But we have a lot of good things going on as, as we come closer to the end of this pandemic. I shouldn't say end, but at least to get us back to some sort of normalcy. Uh, we were very fortunate to have Governor Wolf join us today, um, at the Bethlehem Baptist Church. Rich Fitzgerald, our county executive, Senator Brewster, Representative Austin Davis was there as well. Um, and Reverend Coleman, um, who's been, uh, a part of this community for quite some time, does what she can, uh, to, to reach outside the community, outside just those doors of the church. Um, they stepped up, and that's going to be the site of a vaccine clinic that we're going to have right here in town to make sure communities like McKeesport, not just McKeesport, but the whole region around us, uh, there are many, you know, underserved communities, um, filled with, uh, individuals that don't have the transportation where authority to get to other places for vaccines. Um, the accessibility has been difficult. Uh, registering online has been difficult. Um, so we're hoping, uh, that this is really going to be, uh, a tremendous asset to our city as we work, uh, as with everyone else in the country, for that matter, in this world, to, to get back to some sort of normalcy. So, we will have, uh, we will put things on our social media, on the mayor's office page for anyone that's interested in a vaccine. When we get the information, I believe the health department is, uh, working through people on a waiting list right now. We do have other clinics as well. We had a clinic today at the Palisades, uh, that we did, uh, put on the, uh, our mayor's Facebook page. We were working with a pharmacy, um, that, that was able to give 160 or so shots today. Uh, we're looking to partner with them again. Uh, we will also be partnering with, uh, UPMC, which we will be having a follow-up meeting, uh, ne- early next week. So, we're, um, planning to have a date somewhere in the middle of this month. We're excited, um, that, you know, the 19th, the date for everyone, uh, that wants a vaccine to be eligible for one, uh, has been pushed back to the 19th. Uh, Governor Wolf, uh, did so in here in the state, and, and President Biden also put that out there, I believe, uh, requiring all states, uh, to, to come within, um, those, uh, guidelines as well. So, uh, as we encourage everyone, um, to look out for more than yourself, uh, this is a, um, for the good, for the, for mankind in general, I guess, uh, just for other people. Um, all too often, um, people say, "Well, I'm not worried about it. It's not gonna affect me." But if you do get it, you don't have symptoms, you pass it on to someone else that maybe didn't have the vaccine yet, and things like that. Uh, i- i- it's literally a matter of life and death in some cases. So, um, you know, if we wanna get back to that normalcy, uh, that we had a year ago, uh, that many of us couldn't even imagine on our wildest dreams, um, could ever be, uh, taken from us. Uh, I don't think there's anyone, if you'd have said that we were in the situation we're in now, uh, that was going to happen to us. I don't think there's anyone would've ever believed it. Uh, but we will get through this, um, not just here in McKeesport and the Mon Valley. But, um, to have a location here in the Mon Valley is gonna be, uh, a true asset, uh, to this region as far as accessibility for people that do wanna get the vaccine to have access to it. We will be continuing, uh, with, uh, while due development last. Um, we have, um, the LPR, uh, license plate readers and cameras up, uh, probably pushing close to 150 cameras throughout our community now. Um, we are pleased to announce, uh, I guess not officially, uh, it's not fully up and running, but we now have ShotSpotter. Um, ShotSpotter is, um, up and running, um, through the vast majority of our city right now. Um, you're talking about a system that will identify where shots are fired within a matter of feet. It'll tell you how many, what caliber, um, and it'll allow our officers to respond much quickly than someone calling in to 911 on a shots fired call. Keep in mind, when you call into 911, someone could've heard those shots from three streets away. So, you still don't have a, a good idea of where it's at, and many times, um, you know, whoever may have fired the shots, uh, are on their way. Uh, but it is up and running. It's another resource that, um, we invested in, uh, to help, um, make McKeesport, uh, each and every day we work to make it safer and a better place to live, a better place to work. Uh, and, and we will continue, uh, to do that. You may have seen, uh, we haven't gotten the details of it yet, um, but with the American Rescue Plan, uh, federal government, we're looking to, um, most likely have $27.3 million allocated to the city of McKeesport. Uh, when you talk about prayers being answered, um, couldn't be any more, uh, grateful. Um, it's money that's much needed here. Uh, it's money that we will continue to allow us to push the McKeesport Rising that we've been doing for years with all the demolitions, um, and, uh, the paving projects. I've talked to some council people just like, uh, Lou Ethel the other day about maybe instituting, uh, allocating some of that money. We'll see when we see what restrictions are on it into, uh, like, grant, grants for, uh, those that might wanna buy a, uh, a lot next to them to cut down on the cost like we had years ago. I think it was an incredible idea, uh, that Ms. Nesbit mentioned. Uh, we talked about some other things that, uh, as well, and I talked to other council people. I don't wanna get all through the details, especially if we don't know if we're gonna do what we can do, what we can't. Um, but, uh, I encourage council, if you have any ideas, things that, you know, don't hesitate to share them with me. Um, you know, uh, we'll, we'll have more on the guidelines when they come in. But I, I think the most important thing is, uh, we will continue, um, to invest in, uh, cleaning up our neighborhoods, getting properties ready for development, uh, taking ownership of properties through the McKeesport Rising to sell them to businesses that wanna come in, to continue to build homes. Uh, we have another home that's gonna be built up across from, uh, Twin Rivers Elementary School. Uh, after we demolished, we're partnering with Rebuilding Together, um, as they continue to rehab houses, uh, to get in the hands of homeowners. Um, also to homeowners that can't afford to rehab their homes, uh, they can apply. They can contact my office to get, get it, uh, started, um, and they can apply for grants, uh, based on income, uh, to help rehab, um, their homes as well. Uh, the Action Housing Partnership, uh, has been, has, has been incredible. Uh, we're, uh, continue to build upon that. Uh, and we're very excited, um, for the McKeesport Rising. Um, and I will tell you, uh, this funds, and we're hoping we'll be able to build that and take that even further along, um, than we can because it's amazing what happens when you, you know, we've torn down now probably 400 or more homes in the last five years. Uh, probably closer to 500. Uh, McKeesport Rising alone is probably close to 400, um, and, and what we were doing prior to that. The streets being paved, we plan on doing projects as well. So, we will continue, um, with the McKeesport Rising and, um, uh, th- those types of much-needed, um, uh, repairs and upgrades to our community. Development and the things, uh, you know, our, uh, Pure Pent, who sold to True Leaf, um, they're, they have expanded, uh, 500% increase to their operations, and they are literally, not to go through too much, looking to go probably 10 times more, uh, than that at least, if not much more size-wise. They're really looking to, um, grow here, which will create more jobs. Life-sustaining jobs, families, support families on, raise your families, uh, here in the city of McKeesport. Uh, not only for our current residents, but a new resident that may get employed there and find out that housing here in McKeesport, um, you know, is very affordable. And, uh, we need to continue to add businesses and add residents to our community as, as, and increase that tax base a- as we move forward. The, the the Transportation Center, which we know how big and important, uh, tran- uh, public transportation is to the city of McKeesport. You can see an overhaul going on at the Port Authority on Loud Boulevard. Uh, right across the street from there is our NPP project, which that whole block is pretty much blighted. That entire block will be coming down and demolished, which will be primed for development as the properties there touch both Laugue Boulevard and Fifth Avenue. 100 yards down from there, you have our parking garage. The parking garage project will finally get started this year, and it's amazing. People talk, you know, I don't believe in what people say, because there's oftentimes many comments that are made out of ignorance, and people just don't know. But you're right, maybe for the last 20 years, we didn't need a parking lot, a parking garage at that capacity downtown. But I will tell you now that we will need one. We can use it now, as a matter of fact, with the development that's happening. The Daily News Building is occupied with tenants. Across the street, the People's Building is getting ready for tenants. The Executive Building, it's been vacant for over five years. The entire first floor, that developer has the entire first floor with storefronts already commit, the commitments already made. We will have tenants there this year, as we already have one or two in that, in there as we speak right now. But when you look in the downtown area, the First Commonwealth Building is a building that was handed over to the Redevelopment Authority. We are appreciative of First Commonwealth, although they did decide to close their branch here. They want to continue their partnership with the city. They do so by $100,000 a year commitment under the NPP program, and they did it by donating a building. Do we know exactly what's going to take place in that building? No. But what I will tell you is one of the biggest obstacles that we have in the city of McKeesport are buildings and property that's owned by private parties. Some parties are wonderful to work with, and others are very difficult, and they want to hold on to their buildings, property, hoping to strike it rich someday when someone comes in and gives them top dollar for everything. Well, when you get a building like First Commonwealth, what we can assure you from the redevelopment standpoint is if we have a business interested, we will make sure the deal gets done rather quickly. So that's the reason we're starting to take properties over on Walnut Street as well. From 9th Street to 13th Street, all the vacant properties you see to the left and to the right are coming down. This year, a contract's going to go out. We'll be coming to council here within a month or two for approval. But in addition to that, our Redevelopment Authority is going to secure those properties so that when we have someone coming to us, like we have so many now, we have people knocking on our door. The unfortunate part is we don't own a lot of properties. But we'll be in a position now to say, "Hey, here we go. This is what you're looking for. You like the location? Let's negotiate. The Redevelopment Authority negotiates, sell the property, and the development will be ready to go." That's just some of the downtown area. Housing-wise, Centennial School, which could have been another vacant building. Who knows what it could have turned into, maybe eventually demolished. A building that was never on our tax rolls, for that matter, will become a home of senior citizen housing with the contractor, Brandon Cusage, and his company. So it'll now be a building on the tax rolls as well, a building that can offer nice housing for the senior citizen population that we still have here in the city of McKeesport. And anytime you can do that, because we still have a high percentage of senior citizens here, it becomes another asset here in the community. And that's only a block down, as we talked about earlier, with housing that's being built and in that same vicinity of the whole cultural and educational sector of the city of McKeesport, where we tore down many homes, where we have Action Housing working to build homes and rebuilding together, Pittsburgh, to rehabbing homes, rehabbing homes for existing owners through grants, and rehabbing homes to keep them on the tax rolls and to sell them to future homeowners. So there's a lot of things going on in the downtown area. There's a lot of things on East Fifth Avenue. You'll see the Giant Eagle project starting. I think I said this earlier, not to be repetitive, because I truly try not to be, for those that may be listening, and this is on the official record of the regular council meeting, I should say. It's more than just a gas station. It's more than just a place to go grab food. It becomes a destination point. It becomes an opportunity. When you bring more people into that area, it increases the chances of another development like we had that was shot, that ended up dying a few years ago, of a fast food restaurant. Dunkin' Donuts is still in that, in Fifth Avenue. They're doing wonderful. We're looking to apply for funding to fix the bottleneck down there as far as traffic flow goes, which too will increase, will increase the numbers of people, which is already a great number. We can have anywhere from 25,000 to 40,000 people come through that corridor on any given day. So that, you know, it's ripe for development. West, on the Christie Park section, the streetlight signal, the Byers Development, which has been going on forever, with that's the mall there. We're getting very close now to have that opened up, to where that streetlight will go into his complex, which will then be ready and make it very accessible. So you're going to be more likely to get tenants in there, because we know tenants that are interested as we speak, as we do in other parts of the community as well. The trail, Renzi Park Development, we do have the trail. And I could go into other things as well, but I'm not going to go through everything and be repetitive. But the trail, we're excited with some of the upgrades, not only to the walking trail in McKeesport that's used in Renzi Park that's used pretty much 365 days a year. I see people off their truck through snow sometimes. But we're going to have more, better access to our pavilions, more parking to the pavilions as well as we complete this trail. So please excuse the inconvenience of the trail under construction, but without question, it'll be a tremendous reward when it's all said and done. Other than that, I mean, I could go on and on, but I think I'm going to, being that we're running pretty late now. The last thing I'm going to pretty much just comment on is the goal of the city of McKeesport is to have the summer events take place. I have no intentions right now of closing or not holding our summer concerts in the parks. I think we could do it safely through vaccinations, through masks, through social distancing. So our goal is to have the concerts in the parks. The goal is to have International Village. The goal is to have the Rib Fest over the Labor Day weekend, and pretty much everything else that we have that goes on in our summer months. That's where we're heading right now. We're hoping to get there. And when you hear me try to encourage a little bit about the vaccinations, the bottom line is that's what we're dealing with right now. Some people look at the numbers increasing, and it's a concern in Allegheny County. But I think what you're looking, it was said earlier at the event, and I think it was a perfect way to describe it. It's a race right now. It's a race between vaccinations and a race between those numbers. And we think the vaccination race is winning with what they're about to rule out, the number of vaccines being available, and that's what we're hoping for. That's what we're betting on. And I think it was Governor Wolf that actually mentioned that earlier when asked, well, you know, because he opened up across the state, bars and restaurants are pretty much normal service with the exception of 75% capacity. But we're encouraging everyone to do their due diligence to hope that we can get back to some sort of normalcy. Other than that, I could go through other developments, but I think I covered a lot of them. Other than that, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Move on to new business.
Bill number seven, introduced by Mr. Souls, an ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of McKeesport, Pennsylvania.
Need a motion to approve Bill Seven? Mr. Brown, second. Ms. Nesbit, any questions, comments?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number eight, introduced by Mr. Brown, an ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the proper city officers to enter into a contract with the service personnel and employees of the dairy industry, Teamsters Local Union Number 205 of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, affiliate with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Chefs, Warehousing and Helpers of America, representing the clerical workers of the city of McKeesport, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment, including compensation, hours, working conditions, and other benefits for a period of three years, commencing January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2024.
Need a motion to approve Bill Eight?
So moved.
Mr. Evans, second.
Second.
Mr. Berry, any questions or comments?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number nine, introduced by Ms. Lape, an ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the proper city officers to enter into a contract with the service personnel and employees of the dairy industry, Teamsters Local Union Number 205 of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, affiliated with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Chefs, Warehousing and Helpers of America, representing the Public Works Department of the city of McKeesport, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment, including compensation, hours, working conditions, and other benefits for a period of three years, commencing January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2024.
Motion to approve Bill Nine?
So moved.
Mr. Souls, second.
Second.
Mr. Brown, any questions or comments?
So moved.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 10, introduced by Mr. Berry, an ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, amending the rules and regulations of the Civil Service Commission relating to hiring and promotions within the police department of the city of McKeesport.
Motion to approve Bill Ten?
So moved.
Mr. Evans, second. Ms. Lape, Mrs. Lape, any questions or comments?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 11, introduced by Mr. Evans, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, approving a conditional use request from Lance Greenwood to operate an automobile repair shop located at 1661 Fifth Avenue, lot and block 380-d-E-10, McKeesport, Pennsylvania 15132. The property exists in a C3 zoning district.
Motion to approve Bill Eleven? Ms. Nesbit, second.
Second.
Mr. Berry, any questions, comments?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 12, introduced by Ms. Nesbit, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing the city administrator to submit an application for a traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Need a motion to approve Bill Twelve?
So moved.
Mr. Berry, second.
Second.
Mr. Souls, questions?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 13, introduced by Mr. Souls, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the proper city officers to enter into a contract with Sable Kennel for animal control in the city of McKeesport for the period beginning February 25, 2021, and ending February 25, 2023.
Need a motion to approve Bill Thirteen?
So moved.
Mr. Brown, second, by Ms. Nesbit. Any questions?
So moved.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape? Ms. Nesbit? Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 14, introduced by Mr. Brown, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Kraken Chemicals for weed and vegetation control for a one-year term.
Need a motion to approve Bill Fourteen?
So moved.
Mr. Berry, second.
Second.
Mr. Evans, any questions?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit? Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 15, introduced by Ms. Lape, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a contract with DTI Development Incorporated for a one-year term for grant applications.
Motion to approve Bill Fifteen?
So moved.
Mr. Evans, second.
Second.
Mr. Berry, any questions?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 16, introduced by Mr. Berry, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, recognizing the McKeesport Little Theater as a local nonprofit organization and a federally recognized 501(c)(3) organization under the Local Options Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Motion to approve Bill Sixteen? Mr. Evans, second, by Ms. Nesbit. Any questions?
So moved.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit? Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 17, introduced by Mr. Evans, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, approving a reverse subdivision request from Giant Eagle Incorporated, 101 Kappa Drive, Pittsburgh, PA 15238, to combine lot and blocks 380-d-181, 380-d-209, The combined parcel will become 380-d-181. The property exists in a C3 zoning district.
Motion to approve Bill Seventeen? Mr. Souls, second. Ms. Lape, any questions or comments?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 18, introduced by Ms. Nesbit, an ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, vacating a portion of McKeesport Commons Drive, a 50-foot public right-of-way, beginning at the right-of-way line of Locust Street and extending in an easterly direction of approximately 876.61 lineal feet to the terminus of McKeesport Commons Drive right-of-way in the fourth ward of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve Bill Eighteen?
So moved.
Mr. Brown, second.
Second.
Mr. Evans, any questions?
So moved.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number 19, introduced by Mr. Souls, a resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, adopting the Allegheny County 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official hazard mitigation plan of the city of McKeesport.
Motion to approve Bill Nineteen?
So moved.
Mr. Brown, second.
Second.
Mr. Berry, any questions?
So moved.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes. Yes.
Bill number twenty, introduced by Mr. Brown. An ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, establishing an official stop sign on Sulphur Springs Sports Complex Road at Tulip Drive to regulate traffic in the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania.
Need a motion to approve Bill Twenty?
So moved.
Mr. Berry, second. Mrs. Lape, any questions?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Okay, next we need a motion to amend the agenda to add Bills Twenty-one through Twenty-three.
So moved.
Mr. Berry, need a second? Mr. Evans, any questions?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number twenty-one, introduced by Ms. Lape. An ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, vacating a portion of Two Bork's Street to Tenth Street, a ten-foot public right-of-way in the third ward of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, beginning at the southerly right-of-way line of Two Bork's Street and at a point of Common Corner to lands now or formerly as Philip and Alisa Capelli as recorded as Allegheny County Tax Parcel, three zero seven dash N dash one seven zero.
Need a motion to approve Bill Twenty-one? Mr. Brown, second. Mr. Souls, any question?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number twenty-two, introduced by Mr. Berry. An ordinance of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, regulating beekeeping and the keeping of apiaries in the boundaries of the city of McKeesport.
Motion to approve Bill Twenty-two? Ms. Nesbit, second?
Second.
Mr. Berry, any questions, comments?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit?
Yes.
Mr. Souls?
Yes.
Bill number twenty-three, introduced by Mr. Evans. A resolution of the city of McKeesport, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, proclaiming the month of April, two thousand twenty-one as Fair Housing Month in the city of McKeesport.
Need a motion to approve Bill Twenty-three?
So moved.
Mr. Berry, second by Ms. Lape. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape? Ms. Nesbit? Mr. Souls?
Yes.
At this time, I need a motion from council to confirm the approval of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty dash O forty-five from September second, two thousand twenty, regarding the reverse subdivision for two lots, four sixty-four H one sixteen and four sixty-four H one fifty-one one into one unit. This is to record the plan. Need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Berry, second?
Second.
Ms. Nesbit, any questions?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPena?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Lape?
Yes.
Ms. Nesbit? Mr. Souls?
Yes.
I'd like to thank everyone who tuned in and thank everyone who came. Concludes the council meeting. Good night.